Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. And with the Corrigan being present, I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. Tonight's meeting will be on Zoom as well in person. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reason, reasons, sorry. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirement, specifically General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22, for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes for approval and determining whether such minutes shall be released in the matter of approval, not released, of executive session minutes for August 4th, 2025 and August 19th, 2025. And for the second reason, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair still declares, and I do, and this is for a stop and shop. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, we're now in executive session. All right, we are back in open session from executive session. I'm gonna move on to agenda item three. This is for open session minutes from 8:19, 2025. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 8:19, 2025.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item four, discussion and vote whether to call a special town meeting on Monday, November 17th, 2025, at the Free Town Lakeville Middle School, beginning at 6:00 PM.
So we've been struggling with this date. We tried to push it out to December to give more times to complete the MBTA community zoning proposal. That was gonna cause issues with getting the tax bills on, out on time because Matt has to file some paperwork and he can't do that until after the town meeting. So we backed it up. December 1st was not gonna work well because Cheryl was not gonna be able to do what she needed to do, so we backed it up to the 17th, but I believe we can't get a location on the 17th, right? We couldn't get the school, we'd have to use the elementary school.
Mm-hmm.
So then I said, do we really, so if we back it to November, we're not gonna be ready for MBTA Communities Act. The technical support firm that we hired still hasn't signed the contract, we're still trying to onboard them, and it's just a process to change a zoning bylaw. So at this point, I don't, we don't, there's not a whole lot on the warrant for the...
So we could use a smaller space, you think? Is that where we're getting to?
I think we can forego the meeting and push the meeting to a January or February when we have the zoning stuff done. I, Luann sent out an email to all the department heads and said, is there anything you were gonna ask for?
Yeah.
Cause you know, they, they wait for us to open it and they submit articles. I never, I didn't get a response. Did you get a response?
Any responses that I got were, it didn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, we are gonna need some funding for Board of Health for the PFAS, supplement that.
Yep.
And I think the tree warden wanted some supplemental income for something, but it's not an emergency, it's something we could probably do in January. So I...
So should we just hold on these for now?
Yeah, so I'm just thinking we can hold on them unless there was something urgent that the board had.
That's coming to mind.
No, I, I don't wanna rush it in the name of rushing it in order, because the state wants us to have something in place by a certain date. Well, I'd rather argue that I'd wait till after that date and do it right.
It won't be ready for November 17th.
Cause then we'll just have to have another one.
Then we'd have to have another one.
Yeah, exactly. So then, that's the thing, is okay, even if they, somehow it passes through, then they come back and say something's wrong with it and then we, and then, it's already gone in front of the town a couple of times, I don't...
Yeah.
And I guess the next question is, what does Matt gonna need if we don't do it prior to that timeframe? What's he need to kinda set up?
Matt needs to just file, he, he needs to file like paperwork, financial paperwork.
Okay.
So he, he needs to see the town meeting to see what we spend for money. If we don't have one, he can file the paperwork at any time. He just said if there's a meeting schedule, he has to wait until after that meeting before he files the paperwork. And then, and then he has to file his piece of it and, you know, I'm kinda improvising here, cause this is not my forte. And then that sets the tax rate, then the bill, then the tax bills can go out. So everybody has like a piece of that. If we push this to December, the tax bills won't get out on, for January 1st, and that's the concern. So that's why we backed it up to the 17th, which worked for everybody, except we couldn't get the school, because I think Lakeville might be doing theirs that night. So we would have to go to the elementary school, which we can do, it's just a little bit of a lift. And then I thought, like I said, we don't have anything big on there, we just had a meeting in July. We may wanna push this till January or February, wanna have a better sense of the MBTA Communities Act being in a good place.
Okay, that works for me.
I mean, the risk is, the governor and the Attorney General have said, if we're not in compliance on January 1st, they're coming down on us.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
But we can have that meeting and, you know, is it, yeah, it's a two-thirds vote we need, right?
Yeah, well, we could probably get with a 50% if we just stay with housing, but I, I'm okay, I'm, I feel like we can take that on and we can say, look, we are working with this technical assistant firm that didn't sign the contract until October.
We give it, get an extension potentially.
And by then, hopefully, by January, we'll have a date, right? We'll be saying, we're gonna be ready for February 15th to have a meeting.
Yeah, right.
So we can say to the Attorney General or the Governor or both, that, look, we're working on it and this is where, where we're at. I mean, it may be that they just force whatever we've come up with too, because we didn't vote on it and they just force it, but hopefully what we have come up with is the best plan for the town.
Yeah. And we don't know about any other updates on other towns who are out of compliance?
The only one, and I don't, I don't wanna speak definitively, but I, I believe Hanson, I believe, so don't mind anybody holding me to it, I believe on their warrant, they're, they're funding a fight, like a legal battle.
Okay, interesting.
So, and we're definitely not the only one.
Yeah, I...
We don't wanna be the example either.
That's for sure.
I think, like I said, I think if we can just say, we are working with the technical assistant and we are diligently working, which we are, we've already met, the planning board, you know, will be working on it. I, I think that we can buy ourselves, especially if we can give them a date, we're gonna have the town meeting on, you know, January 30th or something like that. And that'll be coming, it won't be too long before we make up our minds on that, we'll get a sense of when we can get this all done, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
So we're gonna just...
So it's skip four through...
Six.
Six, alright.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll move on to agenda item seven, discussion of vote whether to approve the updated road acceptance policy. I looked through this and I, it all looked normal to me. Is there a notable change?
It's just, it's just updated, it's a, it's a confusing procedure, so it's good to, to put it in writing. I don't believe, I don't know if that we had one, I can't remember. One of the things that I changed is that they have to do a title rundown, right? Don't give me a piece of property with, with an encumbrance on it. I think that was the change, and that they have to pay for it, they have to pay for the title, they have to pay for the title. And it, it really just shifts the burden to the developer to pay for the recording and that. They have to get the deed to us, we only have 30 days after town meeting to get a deed recorded, so I really want the deed ahead of time, before town meeting, because we have such a short turnaround time.
Mm-hmm.
And the other piece of it, I think sometimes developers, and I'm probably guilty of this myself, they will deed their properties out that have easements on them for drainage, for retention ponds or detention ponds, and then when the town comes along, we want the legal right to that easement. So they have to get the homeowner to sign that over to us. So hopefully this puts them on notice that it's best to retain the easement, so that you can turn the easement over to the town and the, and the homeowner doesn't own the easement.
That makes sense.
So that's it, nothing major, just kinda redefines it and pushes some of the cost burning onto the developers.
Perfect. Any other questions or concerns of this?
Would that have anything to do with them putting up a piece of property for the bond instead of putting the money up?
No, nope. This is for the road when it's all done, so it's already done, planning board, the planning board says, we don't, we've signed off, we don't have any issues to it. It has to come to the selectmen, they have to, what's called, lay the road out, then it actually goes back to the planning board for recommendations, and then there's a timeframe that we only, I think there's 45 days to have a hearing and it's gotta get on the town meeting warrant, but no, it has nothing to do with surety, you're talking about planning board surety?
Oh, they ended up doing the same thing with that piece on Water Street, new development there in, behind Matty Ann.
That, that had...
They were gonna hold one piece of property.
You're gonna do covenant?
Yeah.
So there is...
In lieu of a bond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is three ways you can do surety, right? One is a, is a cash bond, one is a performance bond, and one is a covenant. And it's up to the, the applicant gets to choose, and I know sometimes the planning board thinks that they get to choose, but it's really the applicant that gets to choose the mechanism that gets...
Turns into a big hassle for the whole town after...
Right, right, we're, we're sitting with that, it's not great, so you wanna be really stringent about your leases, right? Maybe you don't release any of the lots under covenant until the road is in really good shape and the drainage is, is checked by our engineers.
Like I said, you don't, I don't know if it's, if it's been expected by the town accepted that piece of that road, but I mean, all three pieces of property are up for sale online.
Yeah.
Well, how does that do that when one's the unhelpful?
There should be a covenant that can, they can't sell it without the covenant release.
But we, yeah, there's a neighborhood up near our house, right, that we never accepted the roads.
Yeah.
Because they, the developer never finished it and, you know, like...
It does make a big mess, we had one in Hanson too that was never accepted because it had faulty work done, and it was a big developer too. Faulty work done, went to court, was litigated, and, you know, supposed to finish the work, was never finished, the town would never approve it, and then all the homeowners are paying huge taxes.
Yeah.
So they're like, hey, the road's failing, but we pay our taxes, why do we have to pay to fix the road? It is...
Which one Alexander's going through is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I was gonna say Alexander, right?
So we need to put an end to doing that.
Mr. Tripp?
But is that, is that a mass general law thing? Or is that like our, is that our own policy as a town?
It's the, I think a mass, a mass general law that gives, tells you what you can do for surety. But like I said, if you put a covenant on three of, all three of those lots, you don't have to release them until you, you, the pla, I should say you, the planning board decides when they can release them. You can make them do the whole thing 100% before you release any lots. Now, they never in the past have done that, at least my personal experience, because of course, as a developer, you're laying out a lot of money and you wanna sell one of those lots, because you need the money to finish the work, right?
Yeah.
But I know the last development I did, they made me cash bond it, but I don't think they, I could've fought that, I think, but I didn't, obviously, because why would I fight my own town? But I'm just saying, and you, you know, I don't wanna give the planning board advice, but it's something that maybe they should go to council and see, but I'm...
I brought it up to Nancy before and she was looking into it.
Yeah.
Is, is that something we can make a bylaw and get rid of that?
I don't think so, cause you've got mass general law, but listen, I can get with Nancy, I'm pretty well versed in that, and show her where the law says you, there's three, three sureties and the applicant has the right to pick one, and we can ask town council if we can override that with a bylaw, because it does make a mess.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's definitely worth, worth looking into that.
We have lots on the covenant that we can't, but the town can't sell them, it isn't like we can liquefy them. We can't sell them.
Yeah.
Which I always think is weird, right? So, you know, you have a law on a road, someone didn't complete the road, they have no intention of completing the road, but then we have this law as a covenant, but we can't do anything with it.
It can become a calculated decision for the developer, right?
Yes.
The developer pats away, the business is gone.
Yeah.
Where's it go?
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and I mean, I know from personal experience in previous life where a lot of developers were trying to do everything to get the road accepted, because they were still paying taxes. At the very least, they've sold all the lots, they're still paying taxes on the roadway, and a lot of them had cash covenants on it, right? So they, they had a cash bond rather, so they could, they wanted their money back, so they were doing everything. So I used to go out and install the bounds on a lot of the roadways to, to do that, so...
Alright, that's interesting, yeah.
Work on it with Nancy.
Yeah. One quick question on this, Debbie, make, make sure I'm reading correctly. So we're, a lot of, so reading through this, there's a lot of things on there regarding the road. One thing I don't see on there is parking on the road. Is that this policy or different policy?
Parking on the road?
Parking, as far as updating parking around town.
I think you can park on the road unless they specifically vote no parking, and we've done that before with Carlton, I'd have to look up the procedure. Like, I know in front of Water Street, is there's that...
There's some updates needed around town.
They've done it in front of the forest.
They've done it in front of the forest, right? But I, I think it was a vote by this board as road commissioners, and I think it was something generally worked with Carlton, so I can ask Carlton about that.
How do we get signs put up on Ridge Hill Road?
Ridge Hill Road has no parking, or you want it to have parking?
No, we want it to have no parking. Let me give you some pictures. The whole sidewalk is pretty much almost destroyed, only grass in between and everything because of these trucks all parked on it.
Oh, the...
There's, there's the sidewalk. The other day, I wanna do, you couldn't even walk on the sidewalk, because all the trucks were parked all over the circle.
Mr. Tripp, can we just say your name for the record?
Thank you. And this isn't really not on tonight's agenda, but we have this issue with somewhere else where they're parking.
I take it's the recent one, right? Where they said the same thing, like, there was really no, there was no mechanism for them, because they had to, as long as they weren't, the road was accessible, right?
Yeah, the same exact issue.
And there was a couple of other things, yeah.
What's the point of having a sidewalk if you can't walk on it?
Yeah, that's the only reason why.
There's a sidewalk. There's a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Parked a truck on the side.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I agree with this, but...
And I think that might be like, I think, so the issue we ran to is like the enforcement part of it, right? But I think that is like clearly, if you're parking on a sidewalk like that, like you're, you're, I think there is a, some type of violation there.
Like you're impeding safety of pedestrians, and that's a problem.
You shouldn't have to be told, you can't park on the sidewalk, because if, if it's like that, someone can park on North Main Street, right?
Yeah.
South Main Street, right on the side, half on the sidewalk and half on the road.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I think, I think that's something we can bring to the attention of the chief, just from enforcement, I don't think it really needs to be much there, and, and if they're doing that, you ticket them.
Well, in this area here, not long ago, again, not on the agenda, but like quickly looking at it, over the summertime, the chief in the police department had a vehicle there that was, looks like it was abandoned, just the trailer part of the truck trailer.
There's a refrigerated trailer there.
So they didn't know what to do with it, they're like, is this a parking area, non-parking area, do we ticket it, do we tow? So I think we need to then clarify a couple areas in town, make sure that we're doing it correctly and give the, the police the ability to enforce whatever we put in.
Yeah, I hear you.
So...
That makes sense.
Maybe some kind of a bylaw that says you can't park on the sidewalk in town.
Right.
We should, yeah, we can get this on a future agenda, for sure, and, and, that, that seems ridiculous, I agree, like...
I will put that, to work on that.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
More road stuff coming up? Lots of road things tonight. So did we vote on this yet? I don't think we did. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated road acceptance policy.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, now moving on to agenda item eight, discussion of vote whether to, as road commissioners, the board selectmen, and the board, as the board selectmen, I guess, that's a weird sentence. So it's A, B, and C here, intend to approve the property line layout for the sonnet four corners, refer this approval to the planning board for their, for their action, and place an article the next town meeting for acceptance of this road. So this is, we hired a firm, right, just to kinda lay out exactly where the property boundaries are on, at the sonnet four corners, that was never done, my understanding?
Right, the road was never officially accepted at town meeting and therefore it was never...
It's crazy, it's like the most... 1657.
And when we started to try to do the work on the four corners in terms of mitigating safety there, roundabouts, traffic lights or whatever, we realized we couldn't, we didn't know where the property line was. So one of the things is clearly, like, how do we tell the butters what the impact's going to be, when we don't know where the property lines are? Do we need to take their property? Do we not need to take their property? And I'm not suggesting we do, because we didn't know where the property lines were. So we did hire a firm, we've sent, we've spent a lot of money researching the titles, and there's nothing, the only definitive line is in front of, on Elm Street, that line is on a deed near the fire, the old fire station. That's actually a, a line that was found on an old deed and, and able to be plotted. The other ones are just sort of backup sidewalk is what they're, they're, they're using to come up with this plan. I've shown this plan to the immediate butters that attended a meeting. Mr. Weaver, Johanna Wilson did not attend that meeting, and the land, the owner of the blue building did not attend the meeting, but the other butters were there, they've seen it. So the next step is to just get the road approved at town meeting, so that we know that that's the layout that we're working with and that's what we need moving forward. That being said, one of the grants we applied for to work on the four corners, we were going to get it, and then they asked if we were MBTA compliant, we said no, and they said they can't give us the money, so we've already lost that one, and we applied for complete streets, and we think we're gonna not, we're gonna lose that one, that one's a half a million dollars, the other one was a $50,000, so we are losing grants to do this work, as we knew we would.
Yep, I mean, I don't think we can be surprised, right? This is what...
I can also tell you from personal experience, it's a dangerous intersection.
No, it's crazy.
Yeah.
It's getting worse, it's getting worse. The trucks, the truck traffic, the big trucks that go through there, straight through that intersection, they don't even break, they just go barrel through, it's scary.
And the cars behind them follow them.
Yeah.
And the cars that are coming behind them, trucks just follow it too, like, they got the right of way to go, and it's just like...
Yeah, it's sketchy.
It's scary, right? So that's where we're at with that, so like I said, you're just, it's, it's, it's the same road layout procedure that's a little quirky, you have to, the, the selectmen have to lay out the road and send it back to the planning board for, for recommendations, and then it'll get placed at the town meeting. So that's just what the vote is.
Alright, sounds good. So I'll entertain a motion to, as road commissioners and the board selectmen, approve the property layout line for the sonnet four corners, refer this for approval to the planning board for their action, and place an article the next town meeting for acceptance of this road.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. I was just looking at the, the property that's, you know, now, now is the vet, it used to be my grandfather's building.
Mm-hmm.
And it was, it's on record, 1884 is the first transaction on that, just crazy.
Well, the town hall was built in 1888, and I wanna say the library was not, maybe a few years after that, so all of those buildings are right in that time maybe.
Yeah. Alright, so moving on to agenda item nine, discussion of vote next steps for the harbor master shellfish warden and making guidelines on how to proceed with regulations.
So this is just something that's been hanging out there, right? We had issues last year, we need, we don't have any guidelines, we don't have any procedures.
It's very morings.
Yeah, the morings and that, so we do have another towns that we can work with, and I was thinking of just asking Nancy, the planner, to work with me to get these and then put them out to a few people that we know are, are savvy with this, or maybe get together an advisory committee with a couple of people that are interested in this stuff and know about the morings and the water and whatnot, and then get it back to you. I just, we still don't have any regulations in place and we really need to get moving on that.
And I apologize, cause I don't remember the gentleman's name, it was really nice that came.
Robert Cannon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He was going to get us the stuff from his town, right?
Yeah, he has, he has given me that information.
So, I mean, just cause then you, you're not trying to reinvent the wheel.
No, I think we have a, we have a baseline to start with, which is what I'll give to Nancy, and then like I said, I think there's a few people that were interested that, you know, once we get a baseline together, we might wanna sit down and say, okay, guys, no, you know, now take this and apply it to our waterways.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, cause certain things will make sense for them.
And give us your recommendations, and we'll try to hash them out and then bring something back to this board for, for approval, or for you guys to read further review.
Cause I know like some towns, like, you, you need to get a, like, a inspection of your mooring.
Right.
To make sure that it, and, and there's certain requirements that, you know, certain amount of weight, like, so I don't know, yeah, we, we don't know what we're doing there.
No, well, and I think that there was things that maybe have been done in the past, but with, it was just done, and there was no written rules and regulations, and then when Mark Josu had been the harbor master for many, many years, passed away, that kinda all went with him, right? Like, I don't know if he required, and I, I don't know what was happening, so I, I need written procedures, so that we have something in writing that we can follow. And then at some point, we're gonna have to hire our own harbor master, we use it, we've been using Robert Cannon from Somerset, but he was doing, he's doing us a favor and it's been over a year.
Yeah. So do you want to, the vote here is just to kind of, to proceed creating guidelines?
Yeah, I don't really need to vote, I just wanted to kinda get you, you know, just wanted to...
Just keep doing what you're doing, I think we're all...
Yeah, just get this moving, because it's been sitting here.
Understood. Alright, agenda item 10, discussion of vote whether to approve the amendment number two to the agreement between the town of Free Town and GPI for the Council on Aging Survey and Design for Building Expansion, and so that the change order here is, is it 18,900, or is that the total?
18,980?
18,980 is the total.
Okay.
This is for all the work we're doing over there on the parking lot and the pod, this has been an ongoing contract with them.
Yep.
I hope to get going pretty soon.
Okay, any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve amendment number two to the agreement between the town of Free Town and GPI for the Council on Aging, Survey, and Design for Building Expansion.
Motion made, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Agenda item eleven, discussion of vote whether approve the contract between the Town of Freetown and Air Masters Division of the Rise Group for HVAC for the Town Hall First Floor.
Finally.
Yep.
That's exciting.
Already heat pumps in there.
Yeah, it's gonna be mini splits, so it'll be heat and air conditioning, which is good, because you know how many times we didn't have heat last year.
Yep. Forty grand, is that what I'm seeing here?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. So without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Freetown and Air Masters Division of the Rise Group for HVAC for the Town Hall First Floor.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, and then agenda item twelve, which, which related to ten, so this is for authorization for Debbie to sign the contracts, so without, I'll entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to sign the contracts between the Town of Freetown and Air Masters Division of the Rise Group for HVAC for the Town Hall First Floor.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, I never thought I'd say, Air Masters Division of the Rise Group so many times. All right, agenda item thirteen, discussion of vote on amount of healthcare contribution for personnel by law employees.
So, in our negotiating with all the unions, we've negotiated, all new employees are hired there, our health insurance contribution is seven D thirty, and, and sixty forty, if they're doing the PPO, seven D thirty for the HMO, and they're only allowed to, they're not allowed to get the grandfather plan that the existing employees have, their new, the plan that they're allowed to get as a three hundred dollar to Dr. Bone with Blue Cross windshield. Sorry. So, all the unions have bargained that and agreed to that, and we have implemented that, but I have personnel by law employees that are held under the personnel by law, so I just need a vote from the selectmen that we're gonna do the same thing for the new hires for personnel by law.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, it's only new hires, not affecting existing employees.
Right, for new hires and existing employees will be at seventy-five twenty-five, with the old grandfather plan, whatever plan they're on, because there are different plans, but most people have the traditional HMO. But, you know, when we hire the new library trustee, I mean, the new library director, that'll be a person, a personnel by law employee, it will apply to this new hire, so I want to make sure that we're, we have it in place.
Okay, so yeah, so really, in the vote here, just to have by law employees, healthcare contributions line up with the union employees.
And new hires, yeah, the union employees, new hires, yep.
Yep, all right, so I will entertain a motion to that effect.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. You need water? I got extra water here.
I've been struggling with something over there, I got some over here.
All right. Agenda item fourteen, this is just acknowledge disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest from Melissa Frappier, and this is just because she, her sister, sister, right? Is, works for the police station?
Right.
And, so, she just wanted to make sure and document that, and we appreciate that. Anything else I gotta say on that?
No.
Okay. Agenda item fifteen, ambulance abatements and write-offs, so for August twenty twenty-five, it was one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents. And the amount we actually collected was like sixty-four thousand, if I remember correctly? Yep.
Wow.
Remember, remember that. Yeah, so, we're at awful lot.
We're reviewing that, I went and met with the chief and Nat, and we're reviewing to make sure that the billing company is actually billing what they need to be and doing what they need to do to collect, so. I think we're gonna monitor for about a month, and then take a look at what's really going on. It's a lot of work, right? To, to, our ambulance runs a lot, they're out there working quite a bit, and so Nat's trying to sort of simulate the billing, and so she'll have a good handle on what's going on.
Like, our, this, I should, I probably should know this, and I should have asked this a long time ago, so I apologize, but like, the company that does our billing, it isn't in their best interest to get as much-
They collect the percentage.
They collect the percentage, right?
Right.
So like, the, the incentives are there, it's not-
Yes, but they're only as good as what they have for staffing, and I'm sure the turnover has been great, too, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, at this, at this number trajectory, you're talking one point eight million dollars a year in write-offs.
Yeah, and it's just a, it's a symptom of a broken system, right? Because like, what are we gonna, like, we're gonna go after people and, and that have a medical emergency and can't-
Yeah.
And their insurance doesn't cover, like, we're not, no, that's, we're not going to do that, but-
Yeah, there's a lot of things, right? Car accidents, there's no insurance, so we don't get any money. We have people like, you know, senior citizens that are on Medicare, and-
Did you say Medicare, I remember Harry saying was one of the biggest issues, right? Because Medicare pays such a small amount.
Yeah, I think they pay about four hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we bill like twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So.
But it's all probably built into like, our, our price we charge is probably overcompensating for those, so it's, it's just like a broken system.
I don't think we're alone, I mean, I, I've talked to other towns, we're right in there with them.
But if, so, just throw it, if we build, if we just build Medicare, focus on Medicare, which we may or may not know at the time of the emergency, just what they, well, we know that the maximum the, the pay is, then, we're not gonna change anything, but our write-offs will look more realistic to what they actually are, you know, like, there's probably some things there, doesn't really change the number, but like, it's just crazy that we're, you know?
Yeah, it just show, I mean, like I said, they're really busy, they're working, and like you say, they don't know when they get the call, they're going-
Oh, yeah, of course.
No, this is all secondary, but I think to your point is, is it is where, it's a large enough mon- large enough dollar amount that it's worth looking into, right? With having you guys all look at it and say, is it the billing company, is it us, is it whatever, so it can't hurt. I don't think anything bad's gonna come out of it, we'll say that.
No, we're, we're, we're looking at it, and I will let you know, it, it just may be what it is, but we are looking at it, and we'll report back once, once we, we find anything.
Thank you.
All right, great, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve ambulance payments and write-offs for August twenty twenty-five.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sleckman Loops?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes, all right, agenda item sixteen, this one is interesting. So discussion of vote whether the town would prefer to sell or retain for the purpose of property, for the, for its purposes, the property foreclosed upon real estate taxes located Chase Road Parcel two four zero sixteen. This is a landlocked, right? Well, I guess Clark Lane kind of gets there, maybe not, no?
No.
It's landlocked.
It's pretty much landlocked, and that's why there's, I didn't want to put a street address, because I didn't want people to get the wrong impression, and I think it's the rear of one forty-eight and one fifty Chase Road, but I don't want people to think it was one forty-eight and one fifty Chase Road.
Yep.
So the new laws, the laws have all changed about foreclosures.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah, so now, we have so many days to determine whether we're gonna sell this or keep it.
Sixty, right?
I think, yes, I don't know, sixty days, I, that was what I printed out and forgot at the office, so it's, we've already foreclosed on this, you'll be getting to-
The clock has started.
Yes, I think it says we have thirty days, we have thirty days to, once the judgment's entered, which has already entered, that we need to make this decision, then we have more time. So I did send it out to the, we sent it all to the department heads, right? We really didn't get, I think Mike McHugh said the most information.
Yeah, it was, it was very, as always, a very helpful email from Mike to explain what's going on here.
Um, I don't, the, the only reason to retain this would be to keep it as open space or add it to conservation, and I, I don't see the need for that. Ultimately, that might be, DCR might purchase it, that might be who ends up with it anyway.
He was saying that DCR, if we have to do, if I remember correctly, he was saying DCR would, wouldn't pay anywhere near the value of what we have it deemed at, right? But-
But once you put it up to auction, they, they, they make their bid like anybody else, they're not, nobody's gonna bid, unless you're in a butter and you, you have a use for that, right?
Yeah.
Nobody really is gonna bid what we might happen to praise at, or maybe they will.
But we have to, so, I agree, I mean, if a developer thinks they can somehow develop that, I don't know how you do that, because it's, it's open space, a wreck on one side, and it's all privately owned lots, so I guess-
Yeah, well, buying a lot, and, and, I mean, the other, the other aspect of that is, is there, and everything can be done with money, right?
Well, you can buy another piece of property.
There's, there's a river crossing, basically across the whole front side of that, for anything to get from the main lots, on the, the lots you're seeing on Chase Road that are connected to it, so they would, that would add another piece to the puzzle. So it does make it less desirable, but-
The other, only other part I was wondering about, so it says here, the new laws, the auction has to be at least, like, the minimum auction value has to be a third, maybe, of the assessed value? Is that where?
I don't remember seeing that. We do have an attorney, Dave Coppola, that's working on this.
Yeah, I think that was in one of his emails.
You don't think conservation would be interested?
It's on the page thirty-one, Trev.
I think that maybe, yeah.
What, I can't, I couldn't even-
Do you think conservation will be, is interested in it?
Did, did Nancy say that?
Nancy suggested that if anyone wanted, it might be conservation, but that would be up to them.
I haven't heard from conservation that they want it, I, I would think they, you know, they like to have resource land.
So, so it says here, right, property must be listed for sale for a period of twelve months, if it is not sold in the twelve-month period, then the town must hire an auctioneer to sell the property, the sale price at auction must be no less than two-thirds of its appraised value at the, at the time of foreclosure, which is like eighty-six grand?
Eighty-three thousand, it's not the appraised value, though, eighty-three is our assessed value, so we have to hire an appraiser, actually, we have to appraise, I mean, it's such a pain, we do have to go out and hire an appraiser.
It's a pretty big lot, right?
I think it is fairly good, I, I mean, we have until October twentieth, I think, to make the final decision, so we can put this on to the next meeting.
If conservation wants it, that makes sense to me.
Do you want me to put it, push it?
But at the same time, like-
Get more information from them?
We do have to, like, like, fiscally responsible thing would be if, if someone does want to buy that, right, we can sell it and make money on it, and actually, you know, how,